All right, we are at the village council work session. Um, actually I have something for Barb to adjust. Um, and we are at August first at seven something.
Seven seventeen.
Um, seventeen. Um, and we are going to go over the agenda. We only have myself, Mayor Suther, council president Camera, council person Cos, and council person McNamara. So we do only have three council people here to work on this um as easy, quick, and painless as possible. But there is a typo on the agenda, so I'll make sure it hits that. Um, first things first, as of right now, planning and zoning is scheduled to have their meeting with Phantom Fireworks on August fourteenth. And we are planning on having it in front of council on September fifth, which is the first Thursday of September. So our thoughts are, and maybe you just need to explain to us exactly how we need to do this to turn that. Does it actually need to be a council meeting going into a hearing?
No, you just said it.
Or just a?
Well, I would suggest what we do is we set a public hearing at seven.
Okay.
Followed by a.
Work session or whatever.
You, but let's just call it a council meeting.
Okay, just in case, okay.
Just in case.
Set public hearings.
Is it just a special meeting?
It would be a special meeting, yeah, it would be a special, yeah, just a special meeting, that's perfect.
Special meeting, um, and it's for a public hearing, Phantom Fireworks.
So it like the public hearing is at seven?
Yep.
Followed by a special meeting. So you, you'll, you'll close the, the public hearing and the special meeting will be called over.
Special, okay, that's it. Do you just wanna do, and I know it's not gonna be enough time, but we talk about this all the time. Do you wanna do one for seven and then one for seven thirty? You can't start the public, or you can't start the special meeting until.
No, no, you just say, you just say follow, follow directly by once you close it.
Okay, follow up.
You wanna, you do wanna close it and have twenty minutes or one twenty minutes.
That's what I did wanna do.
Yeah.
Followed by.
Yep.
Special meeting. So just do one, we can do it on one sheet.
Yeah.
One note.
Yes, yeah, that is fine.
Okay, and then, so there's that, um, so.
And then we, then we'll be voting on it that night for the special meeting.
Next.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
So second follow-up question, will you be here September fifth?
Yes.
Will you be here September fifth?
I will be here September fifth.
You will be here September fifth.
Is that what day for that?
It, it's what would typically be over this day.
Yes.
Yeah. The next session.
Um, and then I do believe that we've already asked Tommy and Kathy and such, so, um, and JP. So the other question before, okay, so I have that. The other question is, are you going to be here Thursday, the eighth of August?
Yeah, next Thursday, yeah.
Next year. What about you, as far as that? And you'll be here this Thursday.
I'm here for it.
Um, we have a couple, which we're gonna get to. We have a couple pieces of legislation that have to be passed. I need five people. And tonight, obviously, we only have three. So, um, I'm pretty sure Tommy is back before the eighth. Does anybody know that for a fact? Um, so I need, I'm gonna reach out and just make sure that there's nothing else there um, that we need to do, because we have a couple pieces that we need five people for. Um, okay, do you guys just wanna go through the agenda real quick and then we can move to a couple other things?
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, obviously, there's a meeting minutes and one of them says twenty twenty-five, so we gotta fix that to twenty twenty-four. And then, the committee meetings that we're gonna have on, before that meeting on the eighth is gonna be finance, safety, and legislation. And then here's the legislation. Um, an ordinance declaring certain expenditures to be a proper public purpose. So what that is for, I don't think I have the whole thing in front of me, maybe I do. That is for the, I wish I had all of it, doesn't it have all of it?
What's your question?
No, it's for the certain expenditures to be a proper public purpose. So it's like, when I do flowers, if somebody in the village has passed away or something like that.
Retirement gifts, service awards, entertainment for village-sponsored events.
Gifts, lunches. Correct. So that is just, um, we're switching it, we already have a resolution for it, but it's not qualified because it's a resolution, so we wanted to make it an ordinance. So that's what that's for. Um, the next one is approving a fund for the payment of compensated absences. So, um, sick leave or if we have somebody retiring, something like that. Um, Jeff wanted to start getting a fund put together because we do have a potential of some people retiring in the near future. And, and that could be two years, that could be five years, I'm not putting anybody to do that. But we have, we have several people with the ability that they could. Um, so that is what that is for. The next one is, um, a motion to approve. Okay, so the next one is the fiscal officer to pay ground master for work completed. They did not do a P O before that and that was over five thousand dollars. Um, and we didn't have the P O ready because I was asking.
It was number, it was one of those weird situations where I'm not sure, no one's in line for that. Cause I, I sent them out, they didn't do it, but we had it, it was on, we waited because we had the electric turned off. The shed was on our property and it was dangerous, falling in, so it's, it's a legitimate emergency situation.
Yeah, so they went out and did it. And I was, I was asking Brian if they could actually go do it, because Brian and them didn't have anything to do at the time. So we were trying to check to see if Brian was able to go do it instead of spending the money. So either way, we did, so anyways, it was done, so now we have to do, um, do that for it. The next one is, we still have money sitting in the EMS vehicle bond retirement fund. It's a small amount of money, we're just trying to close out that fund.
I feel like we've done that before.
I do too. Um, just, you know, I feel like I've done it like three times in my last five years.
Yeah, it's like a hundred bucks, we talked about, we talked about it for three years.
And I think, in fairness, I think it was appropriated, but I don't, or I think they changed, they fixed it on the appropriation, but I don't think we've actually done a resolution for it. So we have talked about it, but I'm not sure that we've actually done the resolution to do it. And maybe we have and it just has not been done. But either way, yes, we have all heard this, this hundred dollars is gonna haunt us all. Um, so that's what that is for. The next one is a matter of not being done in over five years. So, um, the designation, the third bank is basically where we deposit our money. This has to be done every five years and it's not been done.
Okay.
So it's, we use Fifth Third, so there, that's pretty much all that is.
And do we, um, do we usually shop around a little bit and just see?
I do believe that they do, I do not believe they have on this one, but when I first started here, we did. So that was, again, five years ago. So we're on my fifth year. So we did do that at one point, but I do not believe we, I know we have not done it since then. Um, because we used to be at, I don't know if anybody does know where we were at before that. Yes. And then when they do like the, um. What did you get involved in the last time, the interest in? Like, they do all their research when they, before they do all that stuff as well. What did, do you remember what I'm talking about? The interest on the money that we had sitting there. So they do, like, they do research all those things. We don't just go through Fifth Third to do everything.
Yeah, he was, yeah, he was talking about doing something back when we were in the school building.
Yes, yes.
That he didn't like make good in for sales.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So they do research all of those things when they do it. Um, and then last but not least, um, the Ohio Public Works Commission for Funding. So that's the Minerva Lake Road. I believe it's around one point four million. Ben sent us five different options, um, the possibilities of, or, you know, asking us which way we wanted to go as far as loans and grants and things like that. And Jeff and I went through all of them and figured which one we had the, that we felt that we had the best shot of getting and we had the best shot of having the money that we needed to do it. Um, so we've worked with him on that, but anyways, this is the legislation to get that, that done and it is to be passed as an emergency as well. Um, and that is so we can get the application in.
This is to do the application to, for a grant or a loan?
Yes, yeah, this is for what Ben was here for last week.
Okay.
Um, so this is, and there was, there's been a whole list of things that we've had to do. We've had to get letters from the chief, we've had to get letters from, we're trying to get some letters from the school. Um, we're trying to do some different things to make our application a little bit better. We've had some, um, resident concerns about that particular area in the past. So we've gone and gotten those emails from like twenty twenty, um, to where we're able to attach those, to attach that. And it was just one that I could, that I knew of off the top of my head that was in regards to that. So that was just one of the things that he had said that he wanted to, um, that he wanted from us. And actually, there's a couple other things that Jeff has had to get. So, um, that is, that's what that one's for. Just so we can finish up getting, um, applying, getting the financial assistance force. That's kinda like our last step is that piece of legislation. That goes with the application. Um, and that is all the legislation that I, that I. And then the only other things that I'm gonna tell you is, if you guys wanna flip this around and just kinda look through any of this, we have so far had the tree guy come out as well as Pennington's Tree Service. Um, one of them is in the tune of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, the other one is approximately a hundred, a hundred thousand, um, to remove a lot of the trees, tree trimming.
It's a big, a big difference.
Yes, huge difference, so.
But what's the difference in the work?
Just out of curiosity, yeah, they, they go around, they didn't mark any trees, so they didn't.
Now, neither one of them marked trees. They essentially went down and they both pretty much had said the same things around the perimeters. Um, most of the ones down on this end, so it's.
Might have to be a little more specific, specific.
Oh, I noticed it, exactly. So, and then we had Russell Trees, it's coming out to do the same thing as well. Um, but I think the main thing was, even if this is just step one, step two, they did divide them out. This one did divide, I don't know that this one did do it for me. Um, but this one did divide out North Lake versus South Lake. Um, one of them was a hundred and thirty-seven and the other one was ninety-four. So they were very similar considering the size of the roots. That was rather interesting. Um, but anyways, we have these two, Russell Trees is also gonna be giving us one. It sounds like this is probably gonna be quite a bit more, um, just from the get-go, from what we were hearing. Um, but this does give a breakdown, like how large the tree is, how much they charge to cut it down and all that good stuff. So here's these, if you guys kinda wanna look at it, you can see, they did do some pictures, they did do some of those, like they did take pictures of like some of the ones that they were moving. Um, but essentially, we asked them for the same thing. Um, anything that's falling into the lake, anything that is, um, the, we explained the project and basically said, what would you do for this project? And this is what we came up with.
Does it like specify like how many trees at different costs? Like, are we able to say, oh, this one has thirty trees listed here, this one has twenty?
They have not on this particular one, this one does give.
Before we, I would just suggest, before we cut them down, we really need a proper tree survey and everything like from the shore back thirty feet or whatever the number is. That would cost money to do a tree survey, but at least then you're gonna be able to designate what trees there. And it's, it's intense for something this size, but you really need to have that done. Anyways, especially since we're next year, we're gonna be, we would have to do it regardless when we get into the engineering and when we get into the pathway construction, because you're gonna have that eight hundred fifty thousand extra to spend on a pathway around this thing and the forebay.
So they, the way that they did is trimming.
Or like, you know, we're preserving anything valuable as well. Right. I mean, there's, I would look back there and say a good chunk of that is probably low value or, not even low value. I would say that's, the majority of that is invasive species that can just get chopped out, but there's, there's some good stuff out there too, we need to work around.
Is the forebay in any of Mike's drawings that you submitted?
Not yet.
Okay, so it wasn't in that original one that kind of talked about different catch bases and stuff?
No, this is gonna be his excellent segue for a minute, because Jeff and I were talking the other day. What we really need to have council do is sit down with us, not with Mike in the room, but with us. And it's not meant to, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Mike, Mike's an engineer, it is marching work, but we need, we need to have a discussion about who will hold the master plan. So Jeff, myself, and the council.
Right.
Um, talk this through, because we really need to have Mike get on his horse. And because we know we're gonna get eight hundred fifty thousand dollars that we have to spend in fiscal twenty twenty-five.
Let's get him a pony, it might be faster.
Right, I, I agree. And if you're getting started now, he can have the majority, you know, we have to spend, we're, because we've got that tip money, we've gotta spend it.
I know.
It may, it's something in the world, because it's just the interest you gotta give back. So not danger to screw it up, things up, but Jeff will know more than detail. But we definitely need to spend or relegate the money to Mike and his team, because it's gonna take a good year to get it done. But in the meantime, he, once you give him his marching orders, he can focus on certain things. You can't dredge the lake yet, you don't have that money in forebuck. You do have money now for pathway, you have money for the forebay and for any trash catching, which will go along with that.
Well, and we had talked about the tree trimming, that's why we started decent amount of stuff.
Right, it's all hard, it's all hard.
What about, what about putting in that, um, I forget what he called it, coldwood maybe?
Yeah, uh, potentially.
So you mean between the legs?
Yeah.
So potentially, we, we only got eight hundred fifty thousand issued. It's gonna, probably a lot of that will get eaten up. So you got some patent, you've got some tree trimming money, which will save us money on this side. We've got, because we've got tip money that we gotta spend regardless. So we can leverage all of that together. Forebay's gonna cost some money, I don't know what that number is until Mike designs. That's part of the trick, right? That's possible, since it, we have to see what the final language is on the federal money that we get, but we know generally speaking what our parameters are that we can spend it on. Dredging out, other stuff, yes, right? So, it's possible. And then next year, we're gonna apply for the same thing. If you're lucky, the Democrats will be in charge, just imagine we got over one and a half million dollar quest, we got eight hundred fifty thousand. The Democrats take the House next year, we may get a full one and a half million more. It's very possible, but we're gonna ask regardless.
The Senate's gonna need a tougher hold in the House, does it, remember?
Well, maybe, that's not, that's not.
That's not what we're talking about.
That's not, that's not for our money, yes, that's not for our money. So our money is all related to the House, it's gonna just rubber stamps it. So, that's what we're having. So what I'm suggesting is, we probably need sometime in the next, I'd say sixty days, probably have a one plan and one or two special meetings just to talk this through with council.
Sure.
And what I would say, probably do it after the conditional new stuff. Let's get that done for them.
Yeah, let's do that.
So let's name some cameras at some point.
Yeah.
Then a special meeting, for sure.
That works.
Okay, um, I just have a couple of things and then you guys can go from there. So I had someone reach out to me that was not happy about the fact that we are closing Maplewood, um, which I get. Um, this has obviously been a project that's been in the making since twenty sixteen. Um, I.
Is this the same one that emailed us?
Did they, did they email you guys as well?
Someone emailed council.
All of you guys?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we discussed it. We just, we discussed it.
Oh, you weren't here, we talked about it.
Oh, yeah, you weren't here, we discussed it.
Oh, I got another one this week, like three days ago.
Okay.
Was it from the same person?
I don't, that's what I'm asking.
Um, well, I don't wanna say it on the record.
I don't remember who it was, anyways, but.
Okay, so they weren't happy about it. Uh, this does not sound like something that has been discussed, I mean, it was, yeah.
Can you tell us a little more about it?
Yeah, so basically, they, they thought it would increase thirty to forty minutes of their daily commute. Um, and they were upset that they were gonna have to, you know, rearrange some things. And I, I responded, I said, at this point, it is too, you know, it's, we've already accepted it. The contractor has already cleared out their schedule, they're doing it. It should be, yeah, it should be about three weeks, um, from beginning to end. I have been telling people a month, because you don't know what the weather's gonna do. And as soon as I say three weeks, and it's three weeks in a day. Um, I didn't, I didn't tell you guys that there was the chance of getting some sort of material that could make it dry faster. I have not heard a word on that, whether or not that's even possible. Have no idea how much that would even cost. And my guess is, is it's some tens of thousands of dollars that we're gonna say no. Um, so just because this project was more than we were expecting it to be from get-go anyways. So anyways, the contractor is already ready to go, um, they have their crew.
Sign up.
Yes, so they've already started putting the signs up. I did just get an email from Mike, um, I emailed him earlier, because we didn't really have a tentative start date. We were, the signs and things were expecting them to be up and running the fifth, as you can see, summer's still covered and all that. Um, to be honest, I wasn't even expecting those signs until the fifth. So that's kinda what threw me for a loop. So I reached out to Mike, um, he does believe that they are going to be closing the road on the sixth-ish. Their plan is to come in and mill it, or whatever that's called, right off the get-go, both sides and everything. Um, and I just kind of explained, you know, the main part with this is if they were to do one side and then the other side, it's gonna take twice as long. Um, their, their contractors are gonna have to be there. It, it just doesn't really, you know, there, it doesn't, it's not gonna, at this point, it's not an option, because that's not how they've been on the project. So I did respond, so then she responded back to me and was curious how village residents can get more involved understanding the projects that are going on. So my response was, we have a Facebook page, we have a website, we have an email blast, we have a text blast, we have the newsletter. We have, I don't know what else I can do. I, we have a live stream, we have a live stream, we, anybody can come in here on Thursday nights. And short of going and knocking on doors, which I'm, I'm not able to do, um, all I can say is, you know, I know this is gonna be put up within twenty-four hours as well. All I can say is watch the, watch the videos, you know, listen to some of the things going on, read the newsletter. Um, now that we do have more space in the newsletter, I feel like we should be able to get some better information out and more information out. And I, and I will take a little responsibility for this. I talk about these projects seven days a week in here, whether it's with council, whether it's with administration. And sometimes I feel like, I've already said it fifty times and maybe forty-eight of them have been in here. So just because I know what's going on and I feel like you guys know what's going on, there are times in which maybe we could put some of these things out there a little bit more. Um, but I know this has been talked about since twenty sixteen and the reason that we hadn't done it is because we were waiting for the connector and all of that, so it's finally happening, you know. So anyways, I did get that, so that's just a little bit of an update for you. Um, I also did get an E, or get something from another resident the other day. Um, I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to find it this fast. And was upset about people parking over sidewalks again.
Yeah, it's happening a lot.
Um.
Right, you just need to get the officers out there to take it, they'll stop doing it.
That's happening a lot and people parking on the wrong side of the street has definitely increased here lately.
Right, but I've seen, I've seen that a lot too. Really, it's a matter of just getting Kevin Chief to get a second shift officer. When I come through here on Saturday and I see them all over the place, I have to call in now, whether they follow up. As soon as the record, I don't know, that's, Chief's gotta call for those guys.
Well, here's, and here's the thing with that, it's not really been enforced. Nobody's really said anything and if you go in most neighborhoods, people don't, I mean, that's just, this is a big walking neighborhood, which I think is a little different than some of the other ones.
We had the same problem when I lived in, in my neighborhood, it was just like this back in two thousand. That problem was happening and we just complained a lot to three one one and Columbus, because they're responsible. They counseled taking people and that was the end of that, should have been.
Well, and that's what I think, I think it just needs to, not that it's not, it is, you know, many people are like, well, we have a code, we have a code, we have a code. Um, we have a code for a lot of things and, you know, there are things that, I get the leash, I get that all the time. I get people that are questioning the leash and the way that we did the leash, I think, was reasonable control. And you can, you know, it goes back to, is that the way that we should have written it? Is that not the way we should have written it? Because reasonable control to one is not reasonable control to another. So they don't see a dog on a leash, then they get mad.
I think we put some words in there that the officer would have to, uh.
Educate them.
Not educate it, test the dog, I believe is in there.
Yeah, that's what they name another code.
Yeah, I think it says the officer.
The officer is, is, the dog is reasonable, the dog is reasonably responding.
Yeah, so, um, there's always a dog next to the pool. We've seen it almost every single day that we're there, it's not on a leash. And, I mean, it, it does listen to command. However, if a dog went running through there, I'm not sure that the dog would be reasonably controlled. I can tell you, a Kimber's extremely controlled until a little cat comes through there, and then it's not. And so, so again, it's all in how you want to do it. Um, and it's the same thing with parking over sidewalks and parking, you know, to, to most people, that's not a big deal. I'm a walker, so I have to walk around the car into the street, so I get it. Um, so if that's something that we really want to focus on and have the officers, you know, really pinpoint it for a couple weeks, because it will stop it pretty quick.
Right.
Then I would say that that's something we just need to tell chief that, look, can you have them really push this for a couple weeks and go knock on doors?
And strollers are the biggest problems, people have to push strollers.
Oh, I agree.
That's the biggest problem.
No, I, I don't disagree, I'm not. So, um, parking over driveways was one of the things they were concerned about, but they were also concerned, I cannot.
Something people don't understand is that if they're gonna park, you can park, you zone up lots of hours, you can use the apron, just put a car there to, you know, the sidewalks, for sure, for sure. Can, they've added made space.
Um, people just throwing trash on the ground and, um.
Yeah, I mean.
Who would do that?
Throw trash on the ground, they need to be caught.
Yeah.
Street trees that are still untrimmed, the branches that are hanging down, unleashed dogs, and people littering. So, um, I'm not saying that they're not all important, because they are all important. So it's just a matter of making sure that we have everybody on the same page that, um, an unleashed dog is not illegal. So it's.
I know we had some conversations about, um, trimming branches that are in the pathways or on the sidewalks. I thought we got a price from, uh, Four Seasons, Five Seasons.
I don't know, we're, we're at twenty grand already, so it's, how much more do you guys wanna spend on that?
I think it was only a few thousand, if I remember correctly, I thought it was only two.
I'm sure you shouldn't be, but I would say, this is one of those things we talk about, the maintenance part that you can profit from. It's a much easier thing for our guys to do.
Right.
Oh, sure.
One day out of the year.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Most municipalities do it.
Yeah, now, that also brings up, recently, I saw something about, um, bees or hornets or something.
They're either coming out today or they're coming out tomorrow. There are three that I'm aware of, so.
Did we take care of it? Is that normally our responsibility or is it?
I thought there was.
Street trees that have them in it?
Yep.
Those would be, yeah, those would be a hornet, and, and.
At this point, we didn't.
Yes.
At this point, we didn't.
Yes, what?
Yes, because, I mean, if we, like, I would say if it's our street tree and there's a, if there, you know, if it's not a bee nest, if it's a hornet nest, you know, which can be aggressive.
I think they were wasps or.
I don't know.
Yeah, hornets or wasps.
I don't know, I can tell you that we went and it's, again, it's one of those things before kids walk into school next week, I'd rather just get handled. So, um, is it something that we should have done or not done at this point? There were three of them.
Happens over here.
It does.
Right.
And, and they're in different areas, but I just didn't wanna take, you know, if, if the homeowner's responsible for it and they're on vacation this week and kids start school next week, I just didn't wanna take that chance. So, um, so we did go ahead and do that, um, that's been done. So that's that.
Okay.
So I don't know what else you guys have, but.
Do we wanna talk, I'm gonna open up a can. Do we wanna talk about Airbnb or leases, uh, because of the incident?
I would say this isn't.
It's not an Airbnb, it's just a rental.
It's just a rental, yeah.
There's nothing that you can do about that except.
However, there was, it was a, seemed like a pretty big deal.
Um, anytime you have an outdoor party, it becomes a big deal for every resident around there. So either we outwall outdoor parties, um.
There wasn't, yeah, I think the issue was that, yeah.
It went too long, I feel like it did go too long.
We have a noise ordinance in there.
I think the question is.
And they had two different officers show up, they were told to turn it down and they turned it down. And so where do you go from there? And then they turn it back up later on, or it's just they're already, you know, people are, for good reason, already irritated or mad. Um, this party apparently went on for several, several, several hours from, and it was a child's party.
I mean, did we break up the party?
We eventually did, yes.
Okay.
We ended up.
So like late night breakup, probably?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so were their parts in the incident?
It was a rock band. I've been, the, the stories that I were told, that I was told in comparison to other things
No.
was definitely night and day different, and I'm just gonna leave it at that.
I think it was Maplewood.
Really?
Was it Maplewood?
Yeah.
Well.
It was on Maplewood?
Yes, so we've had graduation, there's been an outdoor graduation party that I had to deal with for quite a few hours and it was even just during the day. Um, there was another graduation party two years ago that was, uh, also outside and they had a radio and it was during the day, it wasn't anything that like.
It wasn't overnight or anything?
No, it wasn't anything crazy. Um, but anytime you have an outdoor, when our houses are so close to each other, I mean, I think. But, you know, again, most people have parties and I'm not gonna use the word out of control. Um, some people felt that this one was out of control, um, that it was extremely loud. Um, but the only other situation that I found with this one was one call back in May. And they've not had one since then. It's not really, it's hard to justify it as a nuisance property at this point. Um, it sounds like they've lived there for quite a few months and it's not. But it is something that this, you know, this is a property that I think all of them will be paying close attention to. Um, it won't get as many warnings as they got this time.
So here's the thing, here's my question, what do we have on the books and, like, how many strikes do you get and what?
And that's just it, that's, that's one of those things, that there's not a time limit, there's not anything. So, you know, I mean, it, it depends, because that, that's the question. So if you have an officer that gets called at four o'clock in the afternoon of a loud party and they go and they tell them to turn it down, and they turn it down.
Yeah, but it's, but.
If it's not.
I don't think our noise ordinance has anything, I think it's like night to early in the morning. I thought there was times on it.
No, if it's too loud, it's too loud, doesn't matter.
I, I could have sworn there were times on it.
We have, we have.
We do, I, I'd say this, noise ordinance.
Hi, I'm looking for the police department.
Oh, um, are you just looking, do you need to file a report or?
Uh, yeah, I lost my wallet.
Did you lose it in the village?
Um, no.
Where'd you lose it at?
It, um, it's a, I don't know, I'm not from here.
So they can only do it if it is in the village, because this is, a lot of times we get people stopping in here that.
East Columbus.
Yeah, that either need to reach out to Columbus, Westerville, um, London Township, whatever. So if it's around here, then yes, but if not, you're gonna wanna file it with.
If it was, we're not.
And then we can help you.
Um, so it would be by the Town Place Suites, the BP gas station. And like, um, yeah.
That's not.
On Morse Road.
Right.
So that's right, you're seventy-one, right?
No, that's not. We don't have any gas stations.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not us, that's.
So yes, it basically is gonna boil down to.
We have to be.
That's false.
Here's my problem with all this.
So then, do we need to add something like that, is that something?
But it's, the, the thing is, it's like, I want it to be, okay, three strikes. And that's plus.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
But it's, okay, uh, we've sent three people over, you're still got, you, I have video evidence and you guys are still turning it back up the moment we leave.
I'm just worried that my traffic, it's spurred without and I.
I don't, do it again, I know, that's the thing, it's like.
Or is it?
And if it happens again, because that's a resource, like, you know what I mean? It's like, if it happens again, then.
What does I will tell you, I mean, you get people that are fighting in their house or you get people that are doing different things, there are, there are times at which they will go to those places more than once.
In a night, yes!
Oh, yeah, yeah.
People need.
You're still fighting, yeah.
Yeah, they're still, yeah, so.
So do we need to work something out? I, I feel like there was.
Here's what I feel like the issue was, this is what I feel like the issue is. You, everybody was, this particular one, the three that I'm talking about, the issue was, they started early in the day and they went on. So people's patience get thinner and thinner and thinner, which I completely understand. As it gets later and later and later, but we don't have something that says ten o'clock, eleven o'clock. It would, I feel like it would. It would, I feel like it would've made our officer's job a heck of a lot easier, if you guys said eleven o'clock.
Yep.
You've already had your warning, and I do, I do agree with warnings and things like that, because number one, it's- This party not include, I'm not talking about this, so let's get off of this one, because I'm gonna say some things that are in general. Because these people's feelings and these people's facts are facts, I mean, what they encountered is, was what they encountered, so, but in general, you have somebody that spends five hundred dollars on a party, and they get a call at six o'clock, and you can't just go, I mean, I guess you can shut down, but you go-
Right.
But at, but at what point do you want to be that village, or what point do you wanna put your officers? You, you want a good rapport with your officers, and you want your officers to be tolerant to certain things, but also tolerant to the people that are upset.
Right.
If you live next door to Karen, she might call the police at whatever time.
Sure, sure. Mm-hmm.
Like, she just might not even have in any of it, and I will tell you, people don't just, you know, to me, if it were something next door to me, I would've walked across the street, but that's me. I know all of my neighbors, I would walk around and be like, what are you guys doing?
Sure.
Like, people don't do that anymore.
So, so I thought there was something around, like, mowing our lawns with the noise ordinance.
There is, but that is, I think-
And then we have our fireworks things that says you can't shoot them off after a certain time, so-
See, that to me was perfect, because they have a leg to stand on, and I feel like, and I don't think, I don't wanna say that the officers can't do their job, and they can't go tell people no, and they can't do this or that.
Mm-hmm. Right.
But again, you have an officer, the second part is, you have an officer that goes, and then a different shift comes in.
Right.
And, and typically they'll talk, you know, they do, you know, they'll do pass along and all that, but then you have another officer that goes over there. And you have, so now you're at second morning, or third, or what, and who knows, and we could only be at ten o'clock at night.
Right.
So is-
Three strikes.
And that's pretty much what this was.
Okay.
But in the same sense, but here's the second part, you have nine people calling the police in a fifteen-minute span, is that three strikes, or is that one?
It's three strikes when one officer shows up.
So, but I feel like it would've been easier if we just had a flat-out-
Riot.
If you, no, if, if you guys remember, Brian and them were the ones that was like seventy-five feet audible, okay, I'm sorry, but I don't agree with that. Seventy-five feet, I can, I can hear my peo-, I can hear my next-door neighbors talking in their garage.
Sure.
And I will promise you at seventy-five feet, they are not playing music. I feel like people should be able to have a graduation party in their backyard.
I think it would disagree with that, I mean, what we-
No, I agree with that.
But depending on who your neighbor is, they could be calling the police, and it is audible seventy-five feet away.
Uh, why can't the officer make that judgment call?
It is a judgment call.
Yeah, I would say that, if anyone were ever challenging noise ordinance, they will win.
I'm not saying it's not.
There are, there, unless we have some type of device that literally is the-
Something.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, and, and-
I just wish we had, I, I just-
It's a common sense standard.
It is.
It is.
And I, again, there are some that were extremely loud, that I'm not disagreeing with those.
For sure, yeah, yeah.
You know, we used to have a band that would play once a year close by to my house.
Sure.
They would actually go and tell all the residents that, hey, you're more than welcome to come, but it's gonna be extremely loud, and you'll go until like midnight.
Right.
And nobody ever called the police, because it was one of those things that I think everybody knew. But we get that in Northland Plaza, people are calling, screaming, throwing fits, because there's a, but they're in Columbus.
Right. The, here in Columbus, yeah, right, no, I get that, you can't stop noise that's not around.
So- So I- No, so, I just, I, I do feel like there should have been still something with the seventy-five feet, or whatever, whatever, whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
I walk on the walking path, and somebody, I'm not saying who it is, but there is somebody that plays music, and you can hear it on the freaking walking path, and I can sing every word to every single song.
Mm.
So, if they're not allowed to do that-
Well, then-
No, I, I, I don't think that's the case of the mayor, I think it's a sustained nuisance situation with-
It's on, when I go past, and it's on, and I come back down later.
But that's, that's, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider that objectively, even subjectively a nuisance, and like you said, that's not, that's not a-
Fine, that's, that's- I don't like the user.
It, so noise ordinance and nuisance would kinda overlap, if it's a nuisance situation that is disturbing the peace type of situation.
Yes.
The officer can determine that, and that's it's common.
But I think any party outside is disturbing the peace.
Absolutely. And that is what you're saying.
Well, inherently, mostly if you're getting a little bit of these calls, I-
I feel like in my-
Right, this is a problem.
Yeah.
That's a problem, that's right, you know, it's like-
And you're disturbing people at that point, they can't, they can't sleep in their house, that's a problem.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Well, that's, that's what I mean, it's like, if we start getting to ten o'clock, you know, let's just make a policy.
But it's two o'clock in the afternoon.
See, that's why I feel like there should've been, I feel like there should've been a time limit, I, I still feel like that, I, I always did, I still feel like it's just easier to enforce when you say-
Sure. Yeah.
Eleven o'clock at night, end of story, everybody's inside, everybody's this, everybody's that, whatever it is, but I feel like it's just easier to say than-
Yeah.
Okay, but here's my issue with that, one is, if you just say, okay, well, the rule is eleven P M. What about that person that's having a wildly outrageous party during the day, and it's disturbing, like, you can't take them, or you can't work. Or it's affecting your ability to do your job, because it's so loud that somebody can't hear you on your call.
Well, I'm not saying we're gonna take out the audible thing, but I think if you have both in there.
Right. Yeah, that's a thing, it's a challenge.
I don't think it needs to just be, yeah, I don't, I'm not agreeing you want to take it out.
Okay.
But I still think, like you said, it's more, if you have, if you still have that direct end number-
Yeah, sure, so-
That, even if we don't like their discretion.
Right.
Let's say, you know, it just so happens to be my house, and the police don't wanna tell me no.
I mean, the, the opposite side of me, like, throwing this, like, well, it's really subjective, it requires somebody to expend resources and go challenge our ordinance, so it's like, it, we don't just want it, we don't want it.
I mean- Right, yeah, but we don't want that, right.
It, that, it would be a very small problem that that actually happened.
But our thing is, is we, in my mind, we want all of them, we want people to enjoy their property and be able to have a graduation party, but we also want the people next door to know, okay, it's been crappy all day, but it's gonna end at eleven.
Right.
And regardless, if, if they're turning it down three times, it's still going to end at eleven.
Right.
Right.
So, you have that end game, that, I mean, I just, in my mind, if there would've been that set time.
Okay. Yeah.
And I'm not saying it needs to be like, maybe it's ten, maybe it's midnight, maybe it's ten o'clock, or maybe it's nine on weeks.
It gives them a-
I think it's nine, it should be nine on weekdays, and-
Oh, my. We were talking, we were talking ten, eleven-ish on weekday at midnight on the week, Friday, Saturday.
I mean, I, I think, in all reality, do, does this ever happen on a Sunday through Thursday?
Probably not.
So what does it matter?
Yeah.
So ten o'clock?
But right, even from a ten, then it's never happening, it's a-
Hundred percent, it's-
Right.
Friday, Saturday is the issue.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So we say, you say eleven, and then I don't give a name, we, we can write something down.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, are you, I know there's only three of us, which it's gonna have to pass through council anyways, but are you guys okay with adding a strict time?
I mean, yeah.
I'm okay with it, yeah.
I think so.
I mean, I think it should, yeah, I mean, I'm in-
Yeah.
But no later than ten then on the weekends, we're on the weekends, guys, that's crazy.
A week, yeah.
Oh, on the weekdays, yeah.
Yeah, ten is late, that's late.
Yeah. Yeah.
I wonder, I think ten on the weekdays is fine.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do eleven or twelve on the weekends?
For two.
I'm, I'm gonna warn you.
I don't actually need too much of an answer, I'll just say-
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, okay, then, people would've been fine, because they got shut down at midnight, I mean, they got shut down at midnight.
But- I know, but that's like, I know. But here's my thing, is like, I feel like, oh, okay. It's hard, because if somebody's having a decent party, you know what I mean?
But you're not throwing out the party, I mean, they're allowed to take it inside and go into a basement, like, Tanner's has plenty of parties.
Okay, they do eleven.
Right.
It's gonna stop playing music, it's not friendly.
Right. I'm saying, I'm talking about the issues that I have gotten as the mayor, is every single time there's an outdoor party, I promise you I've heard about it.
Okay, eleven.
So I feel like that's what we're really talking about, nobody's saying you can't have a party in your own house, it's just you can't have the music there, yeah.
Insurance.
I don't, yeah, I don't want my neighbors to hear it inside their house, so it's like, to meet group.
That's a party, party's everything.
I mean, Tanner's had multiple, and I shouldn't say that, you know, kids growing up, they've had grad-, we've, I mean, we've had graduation parties, we've had all that, but they were- I don't have neighbors really close to me, you guys know that, so it's hard for me to justify, but I also feel like-
Yeah.
Right.
People should be able to have a graduation party in, at their house. And, and again, I'm not referring to what just happened this weekend, and anybody's listening to this, I'm not, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking in general.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, I think, you know, if there were multiple people that, you know, like, usually don't hear about it.
Yeah.
If it was to the point that this became such a big thing, and multiple people call, I think we should do something about it to-
Yeah.
Know that there's an end game.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, you can't just be like, I don't care, blah.
I agree, the third time if somebody comes back, I don't care what time it's, it's done, the party's over, like, like, okay, whatever, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And that's-
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that is, that is essentially what happened, yeah, that is what, that is what happened, so, um, to my, my understanding, yes, that is, um,
Okay, good.
But yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
It was, it was along those lines, but, and again, I will say, for that particular one, they said they were super nice, super respectful, they did not argue anything, they turned it down.
Sure.
I don't know, I'm assuming as soon as they left, they turned it back up.
Sure.
Um, I did hear that it was a live band, I, I, my understanding, when the officer went the last time, it was a person playing an acoustic guitar. Um, no, 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 that was the end, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I don't wanna do that.
It's a real live? Oh, okay, okay. Is it quite a, yeah, they, tools out front, and they was just like, ah.
No, I'm not saying, but towards, yeah, towards the end, they did tame it down in their minds a little bit, I'm not saying, again, I went there, I do not know.
Sure. So they, they thought they were taking it, they were still alive.
I'm, I'm understanding that there was, um, there was, before that, yes, the end. Um, but I, but I also did agree, I feel like there should've been an end game that would make, I just felt like the fireworks thing, eleven o'clock, it's done.
The hawk or eleven o'clock, yeah.
And it's, it's done, so you, there is no second guessing, there is no, I have to decide.
Yeah. Subjectivity, you change, okay, we do, yeah, we do.
Well, and then I always say this, as most people know, we have one to two officer, typically two officers. Um, but if they're hung up on something, and you have, um, Bluntin coming in here or something else, if it's on the books, they don't have to play the-
Right, yeah.
They don't have to play the game, they can see an ordinance that says at eleven o'clock it's done, they can come in here and handle it and do all of life.
That's right. Right. Yep.
So, if we have something more strict on the books, it would help the surrounding people, I would think, too, but maybe not. Um, I have one last thing, and Eric, you might remember this or not.
Okay.
Lisa has asked about taking out the invasive things in a lot of the reserve areas.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, okay, which we're okay with.
Yeah.
Except we have to find, and Eric's looking at me like this, so, we had a big thing when people were taking down stuff, I have so many different papers. Dear village resident, the village of Minerva Park has recently accepted MI section legislation, or accepted sections in the legislation in the village, meaning Minerva Park is now responsible for care and upkeep. Um, this is village property, we are sending this notice to residents who are directly adjacent to reserve areas. No mowing, no spraying, no dumping anything up after your pets, if you wish to plant in the reserve, you must contact the village for permission and guidance. Um, except I still don't have the permission and guidance, um-
But, so-
Go for it.
Couple things, I'll pack a couple things to ask you questions.
Yes.
First thing is, on this note, if somebody comes in and wants to do something, again, I think we talked about this.
We did, and that's where I'm being asked.
We can, we can develop a, a, a policy, uh, at the mayor's discretion.
I thought we had one, that's my problem.
No, I, I don't think we've ever, we've never received anything as to what people wanna do, because I think it's gonna be a case by case. We have talked about-
I thought, we had to submit a, I thought we ended up that we were gonna make them submit a plan.
We were, a what we wanted to do, absolutely, but somebody has to submit it, and then we can review what they wanna, like, if their, if their plan is, I wanna mow twenty feet into the reserve, that's a no.
Right.
In my head, but if I, if I wanna plant some trees on the edge, three feet into there, maybe that's okay, right?
Depending on the tree.
Right, exactly.
So, I think, yes, yes.
So, but that's the first part, the second part I'm concerned with, is just from what you said earlier, is, uh, removing the invasive species from the reserve.
There was something, does anybody remember what was?
I'm not principled, I'm not principled against that, what I just wanna say is, well, if you recall, years ago, when we did, kind of, we dove into the- Master planning a little bit of green space, and we had one expert show, landscape architect come out to talk to us. And if you recall, we, we still have that plan sitting somewhere, or at least our preliminary plan, in order to do that, get rid of the invasive species, we have to- Turn that all back in, we just let it grow, right, which is fine.
Right.
With, that's one policy, and that's perfectly legitimate, but it's nature'll kind of take its own course, but you will have a basis mixed in, okay? But you have to manage it over the course of multiple years, so that it will cost money and some time and some effort, and we have to at this point plow back into, into the ground and restart.
Right.
In order to, because the invasive are intermixed, you can't just go pick, it's not, it's not mulch bed that I can manage, it's, right, it's pretty extensive.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to kind of make that kind of decision as a policy, if that's what council wants to do, and go ahead and allot money to it. The other thing's a little easier to deal with on the shore.
Well, on this particular one, there's something growing over here adjacent to her property, and, do you remember what it was?
It's honeysuckle.
Honeysuckle.
So, it was like going up the trees or something, and she was, you know, so the question was, is can she just go remove it? And I was like, okay, the problem is, if I let you do it, then I have other people doing this. So then I was like, okay, we'll get us a plan, so I do believe we have the plan in which she had to put together, and then-
Okay, so she, that's interesting, so she wants, she's putting a plan together, but she wants to de-weed essentially the area. If she identifies the, the, the plants, or knows, you know, uses a Google, identifies the plants, I got honeysuckle, I got poison ivy, I got this, I got that, great. Um, you know, I would say, you know, there, there are things that we wanna keep in there, there's gonna be meadow flowers, milkweed, things like that, that are good for a lot of the critters, if you wanna keep going. Uh, I just don't want her just swacking away at everything, come to the surface.
I'm gonna send you this, this is, and, and-
But, but yes, I, I think that's a good, nice idea for applying to them, we can review that in-house and, can you say, yeah, you're into it?
She sent this over May fifteenth, and it's the proposed, the target areas, she sent me the whole proposed plan, so, she's ready to go.
Yes. Okay.
Um, as long as we can approve it, so I'm gonna have you look at it, and then if we need to bring something to council, I don't either, but I would like to let her know whether or not they can get moved on.
I don't think you do.
I trust, I'll just say, I trust this individual with just judgment when it comes to invasive species, whether-
We'll make sure she's not tearing down her own thing, she's, she has to identify and say, I don't need a honeysuckle, I don't need this, that's why I'm gonna approach it, not, I don't just need one.
Yeah, and they put, no, it's not, you're receiving it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that's-
I know, I know, but I was saying, so-
Yes, well, yeah, because you have to keep it straight across the board.
Right.
And, and that's what I wanted to make sure, but that's all I have.
Very good.
I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
We good, good, Eric, John?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.